Thank you. Good evening. We'll call this special capital budget meeting of Town Council to order. It's pretty straightforward in terms of the agenda. We have the capital budget and a quick update from Miles on the Energy Management Program. I'm assuming there's nothing else to add to the agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as circulated?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilor Thorburn, seconded by Councilor Frazier had her hand up first. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Hearing none. Agenda is approved and we are underway. So I guess we'll start. Kim, do you want to jump in with a quick, um, quick start on the budget and then we'll kick it over to Miles for his, uh, his update and then Miles can sign off and we'll go back to you.
Okay. Good evening. I'm primarily going to be going over the capital budget document that was circulated with the agenda. So we'll look at our debt service ratio, our reserve fund balances, and the overall 10-year capital plan, broken down by type of project. But in large part, we're going to spend a lot of our time going through the 2022, 23, capital year. We'll go through those projects individually and discuss those in detail. The other departments have representatives here so that if you have any specific questions, we can defer those to them. I think we're going to start, though I think Larry's going to introduce Miles. Miles wanted to go over the Energy Management Plan. On the first page of the 2223 budget, there's a number of items that are related to the Energy Management Plan. So we thought it might make some sense to go through the highlights of the Energy Management Plan to, as a reminder as to why those items are, are there in the capital budget.
All right, Larry, over to you.
Again, Miles is just here to present his memo and talk specifically about the Energy Management projects that are in the capital budget. So welcome, Miles.
Thanks, Larry, and thanks all for, for meeting tonight, have a chat about what I love a lot about energy. Quick recap is a bit of connection to the projects that were submitted for 2022, 2023. We had the Community Energy Investment Plan, which was a fairly recent document, 2018, accepted by council that aimed to do 80% reduction of emissions by 2050. Within that document, there was also to, some notes to establish and build upon the energy management for the town-owned facilities. And one of the standard practices to continuously update the Energy Management Plan typically every five years. And that's what we did in 2020, where we passed the 2021 to 2025 Energy Management Plan for town-owned facilities. Now, within that plan, we also included the Lunenburg County Lifestyle Center and PSC, Public Services Corporation. And one of the first things to do was to establish a new goal. What we did was we consolidated some of the metrics. We used to have a couple of different ways to track our performance and progress. By consolidating them into one, it made it a bit easier to track. That one being greenhouse gas emissions reduction, and it also aligned close to the Community Energy Investment Plan. So that's why when we look at the projects now for 2022, we see how much emissions they're going to reduce. And another one I added, I don't know if it's in the lineups for the capital budget, but in the memo, I certainly addressed the proportion of, um, overall relative proportion of overall emissions we'd be saving. So based on the entire portfolio of the town of Bridgewater. So in the Energy Management Plan, we established the goal of 53% emissions reduction, sorry, 34% emissions reduction by 2025. As well in the plan, I laid out projects based on audits to be carried out for the, for the next four years, four or five years. And the energy calculations, the energy evaluation that was carried out, also leads to greenhouse gas emissions reduction, also evaluated that time in order to meet that 34% reduction. So that's sort of where we are and where these projects came from and why they came to be. I think another point before I move on was just that the target aligns with the Community Energy Investment Plan, and it also aligns with the Sustainable Goals and Development Act. So that was the, that was the previous act of Nova Scotia for emissions reduction province-wide. And so then into our progress to date, which is good context to see how we're doing. So to date, we are, I initially assessed that we would be at about a 15% emissions reduction by this time, back when I evaluated those projects and based on what we currently had planned. I recently did a check back to see where we're at, and we're at 17% reduction so far. So we're progressing nicely towards our target, which is good. Then, so that takes us now into the projects that we've submitted for 2022, 2023. And what, what this, in, in general, what this would amount to from a emissions reduction percentage-wise is 28%, which gets us really close to our 34% reduction ultimate goal and gives us good breathing room to update and add projects in the future. And why I say add, three of the core projects that I've laid out for next year are going to lead to additional savings opportunity. They don't necessarily appear in the Energy Management Plan, but they are certainly important steps. The two examples are the wastewater treatment plant audit, detailed energy audit. So that we can hire a consultant to go in and do a deep dive, not only to the facility itself, but also to what the infrastructure upgrade plans are for the wastewater treatment infrastructure and put an energy and emissions lens onto it. The second one is a townwide training and awareness campaign. And two important outputs of that are to increase engagement with the overall Energy Management Plan for the town facilities and to identify energy champions. And then the third one really is about finding opportunities, additional low cost opportunities, to then have additional impact on emissions and energy savings. One, two, three. The third one that we see is, it's the solar PV townwide assessment. So we do see some capital project in there, some capital project in there for solar PV, um, capital costs. But what's important too is to have a closer look at the feasibility for, for doing the installations. And to then also prioritize the sites for development. So to date, what I have done is I've had a look at the rooftops of each of the facilities. And I've also discussed with our, our town, uh, town engineering to talk about in general feasibility for doing those developments, and that allowed me to create projections of how much emissions we could save, how much energy we could generate, and how much the projects would cost. But it doesn't give a detailed look at feasibility. So we need to look at things like the ability for roofs to hold that type of weight. Is ground mount possible? How much would ground mount cost? So two things that have happened in next year are that we would aim to do that townwide feasibility to prioritize the development, but also based on what I've currently looked at, I've also added in capital costs for two different sites. Then I think the other one that, that might have some questions is about the police station. And I initially had the police station for last year's capital budget, though I understood it got, uh, it got dropped. The reason why I'm adding it back in is to highlight the low payback period. In its three, it's a three-year payback period, and the reasons for that are it's predominantly a electric heated facility. And by adding in a central heat pump with the existing infrastructure that's at that building is reasonably cost-effective. The second being LED light opportunities for the whole building. And that efficiency can support that project with a pretty good incentive through our small business program. So for those three reasons, uh, we see a payback period of about three years. Just having a look over the rest of the projects, I think I've touched on what I'd like to touch on. We've touched on those, uh, the three studies that, again, in my opinion, they also align with the intent of the Energy Management Plan, they align with the intent of the Community Energy Investment Plan. I've talked a bit about some of the payback periods, especially for the police station, some of the rationale behind the training and awareness campaign, and the wastewater treatment plant audit.
Well done, Miles.
Yeah, happy to, happy to ask any questions.
Questions from council? Uh, let me see, so which of my participants is, uh, Councilor McDonald?
Hi, Miles. I'm just wondering, do you recall why we removed it last year? I can't recall. And how many years are remaining on the, the lease, the current lease at the police station?
I can address the first part, but I might have to, uh, tag in Larry for the, possibly for the second and, and to finish off the first. My understanding is that the payback periods weren't necessarily highlighted. And so what, what I suspect is it was dropped, again, to be confirmed, I suspect it was dropped because of the lease arrangement and that we wouldn't be, you know, some questions around whether or not the project would have paid for itself before the lease was terminated.
I can't remember how long it's left in that term.
I think it's like seven, seven to 10 years, and this certainly has a payback shorter than the, the term of the lease.
Okay, yeah, so some time to kind of reap the benefits. That's good.
Other questions for Mr. Cornish? All right. Good update. Thank you, Miles, and we'll discuss as we go through those items in the budget.
Perfect. Thanks all. Cheers.
Thanks. Back to you, Kim.
Okay, perfect. So on the package that was distributed, the, um, actually, I think I should just be able to share my screen so that everybody can see what page I'm on, even if you can't read it on your screen, you should at the very least be able to see what page I'm on, which might be a bit helpful.
Well, it'd be good for the, for the public too, as they watch it, to see the, to see the items on the screen.
No, my computer thinks I'm presenting. Can everybody see it?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. So on this initial page, this is really where we're talking about our debt service ratio. So I also, so the second last line is the debt service ratio based on this capital budget. I also wanted to show you what the debt service ratio was when we discussed the capital budget last year. So you'll see that it's, it's similar, but, uh, so we have a little bit lower in the first couple of years, and then it gets higher, and some of that is the timing of, of projects. But we do kind of see where we get to the 15% mark in '25, '26. Um, there's a couple of things to kind of keep in mind, and that's that we project out revenue to only grow modestly. We, we don't have aggressive growth in revenue targets when we're doing this debt service ratio. And the ratio is simplified is the cost of paying back our debt divided by our revenue, so a percentage of our revenue. So if we don't show our revenue growing fast, obviously, the ratio will look a little bit worse. So we're projecting about 3% tax revenue growth, and so that does affect that calculation a bit. It would have been the same last year, but just knowing how much growth we're anticipating just for 20, going into '22, '23, if that were to continue, then obviously the debt service ratio will end up being a bit better. And the other piece of that is that we generally don't include grant revenues in this capital budget unless we know it's going to happen. So we don't, especially in the later years, have any grant funding in there for projects that we're, you know, that are in two and three and four years out, unless we know we're going to have grants for those. So there could be additional funding for capital projects that we're not aware of, which would also alleviate some of that borrowing pressure as well. So just, we do hit that a couple of years early, but just over the 15%. I think we've talked before, that 15% is not a stopping point. It's just the point with which the Department of Municipal Affairs might wonder what we're doing, what our long-term plans are, but we can borrow up to 30%. So it's not, it's not a defining point. It's just ideal if we're low risk and below the 15%. I also wanted to give you an idea of the reserve. So we know that our reserve balances are, you know, are moderate risk, but they're not, you know, so they're not significantly high, but they're not zero either. So I just wanted to give you the balances. So the 2021 column, the first column, is what our, our balances were at March 31st, 2021, in our financial statements. And then what I've done is project out where we are based on this capital budget, the monies that we're planning to use from capital reserve and operating reserve and gas tax, projecting out what's in this 10-year capital plan and what those balances will be. So gas tax, for example, we had a million dollars going into this year, and the reason for that is they gave us double amount of gas tax last year, but we didn't have time to pivot and decide exactly what that was going to be spent on. It came in after the budget was approved or right around that time. The exact same thing actually has happened in '21, '22 fiscal year, where we've gotten an extra amount of gas tax again. So we're seeing that accumulating a bit because we're intending to use it, but a lot of what we're using it on is actually multi-year projects. So once those are kind of come into being completed in '22, '23, then we see that, you know, we've got a little bit of gas tax there we could actually assign to some projects in the future, but it's only about $250,000. So we do have that balance that's basically not committed to a capital project. And then the Special Purpose Tax Reserve, I just wanted to give you the balances of that while I was giving you the total reserves. So the total reserves at the end of last March was $8.7 million. Part of that's a special purpose tax. Obviously, we can't fund the capital budget with that, but we just wanted to provide you with that balance as it does go up and down over time. And the capital reserve, which is not a significant balance, but we do have some projects in this capital budget being funded by the capital reserve. So that balance does go down in the next couple of years, but it kind of stays around the $1.7 million balance.
Uh, Councilor Thorburn, you had a question?
Yes, Don. So in reality, that gas tax that was shown in reserves will have an effect on our revenue streams on our capital budget each year. It's not in there now. So that would really have an effect on our debt ratio and lower that somewhat, maybe not a lot, but at least somewhat. And that's a pretty much a given on those numbers posted tonight, correct?
Um, the gas tax reserve balance? I, I didn't quite get the question, Councilor Thorburn.
All right. The question, the question was, given our gas tax money in reserves that we have now, that will affect our dash ratio because it's not added into our budget, capital budget at this time. Is that correct?
Um, no. So this, that doesn't affect the debt service ratio at all. And the monies we are anticipating to get in gas tax plus the reserve money is all being used in this 10-year capital budget, with the exception of the $250,000 per year, or I guess right now that's unassigned. So right now, at the end of fiscal year 2022, we should have about $930,000, but we're committing it in this budget. The only thing that's uncommitted is the $250,000, and all likelihood in the next couple of years, we'll commit that to something. So that balance would be expected to be zero. We do receive $675,000 per year. We also budget to use that annually.
So it really has no effect on our revenue stream then?
No, it doesn't.
Or our gas tax reserve?
Yeah. So the debt service ratio, when I say it's calculated using revenue, it would be our own source revenue. So grant revenue isn't included, is not included in that calculation. It's just our, our sewer and tax and self-generated revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so like I said, I just wanted to give you an idea because we certainly, while our reserve balances look good, the gas tax being committed but not used bumps that balance up a bit. So moving into the, the 2223 capital budget, I'll, I'll just go through each of the items. And if there's questions, I don't know, Mayor, if you want me to finish the page and see if there's questions, if that's ideal, or if we want to just deal with questions as we go.
Um, let's just deal with questions as we go, if that's okay.
Okay, sure. So the first item is the Audible Pedestrian System. So that is for the Le Havre-Glen Allen area, and that budget amount is $14,000 for '22, '23. The next item on the list is the Bridgewater Memorial Arena Auditorium space. So right now, this budget amounts $200,000. It includes the installation of an elevator as well as renovations to the upper washrooms, the heating system, electrical, and installing accessible ramps. To note with that one is that there's $100,000 in confirmed grant funding. So that is specific to the elevator itself, and then the rest is being funded from operating reserve. So that was, just wanted to highlight that grant noted there. The next one on the list is the Bridge Railing Replacement Program, $50,000 in the budget for this year, and that is in the King, Pine, and Carstar area. The next item on the list is the Brookside Cemetery paving the entrances, and the budget for that for this year is $10,000. I believe there was, um, there's a, two entrances with two different budget years. So that's the York Street entrance. New to the capital budget this year is the Brookside Cemetery camera upgrade. So looking to upgrade the cameras there. The budget for that is at $15,000. The next item on the list is the Bucket Truck, vehicle number 109. It's my understanding that our current bucket truck is no longer certified and can be used. So engineering has given you two options. Option one is to look at a used truck at it with a budget of $180,000, or option two, to look at a new truck for $300,000. And they've identified that you could possibly tender for both options and, and see what is available at that time.
So do we know, is this, is this the same size truck as we currently have? Is this a bit smaller? Um, I, I think I, I felt that the truck we had was quite large. Um, Larry?
Andy, does this, this budget's based on a truck that has a similar reach, but the overall size of the vehicle is slightly, or, or is smaller than the existing one?
And I know we asked this last time we bought the other one used, that, that we need, we need to own one versus renting one just because we use it so much?
Well, we do use it quite regularly. To rent one, it would be $55,000 per year. Uh, we have rented one recently just for the month so that we could work on a few projects to complete. But yeah, it's to rent one on a permanent, I guess, basis is $55,000 per year.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilor Thorburn?
But Larry, my question would be certainly that the truck that we have was one that was a used power commission truck, which was probably the length we needed, but the, the truck was way too big. And the new one would be something like Bell Alliant Bucket Truck or East Link Trucks. They're quite a bit smaller, but they would still have similar reach. Would that be correct? A fair statement?
Yeah, that's, uh, that's my understanding of this budget, yes. We were looking to have, we were looking to have a reach that would actually allow us to access the lighting at the Kingsman Field. That's why I guess when we looked at the used options, uh, that was one of the things that we tested, I guess, uh, when we were evaluating, uh, the options when we bought the previous vehicle.
Great. I would certainly support the new vehicle versus the used one because we need it, and it will give our longer lifespan and the payback would be greater. So thanks again.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Sorry, I wasn't clear for asking questions as we go, so I've got two, two quick ones. Um, the Bridge Railing Project, in Q2, you noted that there was deficiencies and, and obviously the, all the money wasn't spent. Is this part of that, or what are the deficiencies from this past year?
So there are still some, I guess, deficiencies outstanding for this, for, for this current year. Uh, we're not going to be doing any more work, I guess, primarily because of the time of year. And during that work, we discovered that more had to be done. So we were, I guess, electing, I guess, not to carry forward that money, but just essentially reintroduce, uh, uh, new monies into the next year's budget.
Okay. And the same kind of question with the crosswalk improvements, it looks like we, at least at Q2, we hadn't done anything. So is this just a rollover from the current year?
The Crosswalk Improvement Program, uh, I think you'll see that most of that money will be spent by the end of this fiscal year.
Thank you.
All right, moving on.
Okay. All right. Um, yes, so the Q2 report, remember that's only up to September 30th. So still quite a bit of projects were worked on. Um, we are working on a, on a Q3 report and a forecast to let you know where we're at currently and where we think we'll be at March 31st. So hopefully you'll find that to be of assistance. Um, so we just finished out the bucket truck. So the next one would be Exit 12A. We've committed with the province to that project being $8.4 million. There were some changes to the repeat, to the payment schedule as well as the recommendation of in-kind that will be reducing our payment. So it's just changed this one, um, up for timing a bit. I believe last year we thought it would be $3.2 million in this fiscal year. It's up to 3.6, and it's not because our payment increase to the province, it's just the timing of the in-kind in addition to our, our commitment to the province that year. So the total project is still at 8.4. We've just changed the timing a bit. The next one, the CNR Bridge Swing Gate, this one is a new introduction to the budget, and it's two sets of swing gates for the Centennial Trail to restrict ATV use on the trail bridge. And that budget is for $10,000. The next one is the Centennial Trail Bridge Stairs and Ramp. And so this one is to provide access to the bridge. Um, and it's in the budget assuming 100% grant funding. If that 100% grant funding is not received, that project wouldn't, wouldn't move forward. The next one is Columbaria, and so that is a budget of $20,000 in the current year. This would be year one of a two-year project, the first year to do groundwork and site work for this year at $20,000. And then next year, the commitment would be $120,000. Um, the reason for that is we're getting close to capacity. We sell probably about 20 units per year or so, some a little bit higher more recently. There's, I checked today and we have 39 units left. So the installation of this, you know, by the end of the next year, I guess, the '23, '24 capital budget, we would likely need. I guess, the twenty-three, twenty-four capital budget, we would likely need those units available, or new site available.
Councilor McDonald?
Are those typically pretty cost recovery, just out of curiosity? By the time they're sold, they've pretty much paid for themselves?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, the next item is a commercial washing machine for the fire department. So the notes indicate they're currently using a fifteen-year-old household washing machine. Um, and then they also have to send out a lot of their gear to be cleaned, um, professionally because it, the washing machine they have on site is not capable. Um, it wouldn't be a significant reduction, but there would be some reduction in operating costs because there's more things they'd be able to do themselves, and the budget for that is eleven thousand dollars. The Crosswalk Improvement Program is an annual program, and it's budgeted at ten thousand dollars. And that's, again, to kind of improve warnings and barrier-free access, including the tactile, um, panels to be used. The next four items are the Energy Management Plan items that Miles, um, had discussed. So the first one being the police station, which would be LED lighting and heat pumps. And the budget for that is eighty thousand dollars, and he had identified that that has a payback period of three years. Um, also indicated that the annual energy cost savings will be about sixteen thousand dollars.
Have we reached out to, like, we know we leased that building, um, and I know that we're probably responsible for all the improvements, but recognizing that, um, I think we're closer to the seven or eight years than we are the ten years remaining on that lease, and the owner of the building is going to inherit what will be a relatively newer and more efficient building than the one that we have now. Have we talked to the owner of the building to see if there would be any recognition that, again, they're going to inherit a much better building and some cost sharing?
Um, that's not something I'm aware that we've done. Tammy's shaking her head no, so I will assume that we have not approached the property owner.
No, I, I do know the lease agreement requires that when we do improvements, we get their approval to do so, but I don't believe that contact's been made to see if they'd be willing to cost share in that.
I just think, just because it is such a short amount of time left in the grand scheme of things, um, you know, if we were at day one of a, a twenty-year lease or a twenty-five-year lease, then I can see the building owner saying, well, I'm not going to do it because what I'm going to get at the end is not, not going to be a, a sustainable product. But again, where it's less than ten years out, and this is still going to be up and running, um, there's certainly an advantage to the building owner to have this installed. More so than us, I would think. Worth having a conversation.
We can ask, um, certainly make the approach. This budget's based on not getting any, any cost sharing from them, and we would probably keep it that way, um, not knowing what their response is unless we hear a positive response prior to finalizing the budget. But we can, we can make the, we can make, we can initiate the request.
Thanks.
Um, also to note with that budget line item is the twenty-six thousand dollars in grants that will be available, um, through rebate, um, and through Miles. And so that was twenty-six thousand, so the, the net cost to the town would be about fifty-four thousand. The next one is the, the Energy Management Solar PV, and that would be, it's identified as being for the museum and the fire hall. Um, the payback on solar, on those solar projects would be about fifteen years. So it's a bit, quite a bit longer than just doing, you know, the lighting and the heat pump at the police station. But those are properties that the town owns. Um, the next would be, the next item is identified, oh, sorry, um, I didn't go into the, to the cost of that solar PV. So the budget amount for that would be two hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred dollars, um, with fifteen thousand dollars in grants for that item. The next one would be the solar study, and so that was, Miles had discussed that. That's a hundred thousand dollars in the budget, um, with about sixty-five thousand of that being funded with grants. And the wastewater treatment plant energy audit, he discussed as well, the budget being a hundred thousand dollars with opportunity for grants for that as well. The next item is also, is for the fire hall, and that's audio equipment for the auditorium and the meeting room. And the budget is, um, estimated at ten thousand dollars for, or sorry, twelve thousand dollars for that. And that's the installation of speaker and microphone jacks and so on to facilitate, um, functions being held at the fire hall. The next item, um, is new, and it's a flatbed asphalt trailer. Um, and so currently, we do have two trailers, but we have some shared use for those. And so there, this is a, a twenty-foot manual tilt trailer to haul the mini excavator and the asphalt roller.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Tanner, you have a question? Yep, Andrew, go ahead.
Oh, didn't you hear that?
No.
So I said I'm following along here, but Ken just scrolled up, so thanks just for the public's purpose.
Okay, sure. So that's the end of that page. Sorry, I didn't scroll because I'm reading my notes in front of me, um, and not looking at the screen. Oh, on the next page is the Generations Active Park Conceptual Plan. And so this has been identified as year one, um, splash pad and playground. The budget is two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And, um, it's been identified, um, and is the exception to the rule that we have grant funding of a hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred. And this is a situation where we, that grant funding is not confirmed, but the project would only go ahead if the grant funding was received.
Uh, Councilor Thorburn, give your hand up.
Yeah, I, I know when we talked about this, it used to be some mention of the pickleball courts maybe going on there, but I don't even, I seen the long range plan, but it's not even on this document and, uh, probably should be added because I would like to get something done there fairly soon.
I would imagine as we kind of dig down into what is in that, uh, you know, I know it says Greenspace Volatile Courts Stuckamboard. I, I, I'm sure there's probably room as we talk to groups such as the Pickleball Group and their fundraising capabilities that there would be the ability to add as we build that in.
Yeah, I think this year would just be the, uh, servicing splash pad and playground. That's what, that's what the proposed, so there is, I guess, time to alter years three or four where the pickleball courts, if, if council wanted to incorporate them in, that's probably where it would go.
Uh, Mrs. McDonald?
Yes, just to say that this is, uh, aligned with the conceptual, uh, plan that council endorsed in March of twenty nineteen. So we moved around the different, um, phases, but it follows that revised Generations Active Park, uh, conceptual design that council approved.
And I would imagine if, if, you know, funding came in for other, um, accessories, if you will, such as pickleball or something, then we could, those things would move up as funding came in, right? Uh, Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yeah, just, just along those lines, I mean, I guess it, it was twenty nineteen that we sort of said this is the, the plan. Um, and I know we've had a recreation study concept or asset discovery, uh, concept in play for a while. And maybe it's a, it's a task that we should take on to understand what assets have been developed throughout, uh, Lindbergh County, where they're located and so on, and, and look at that, doing that again to understand whether this is the right priority for that list of services, but obviously not, uh, not for really a depth, in-depth discussion tonight.
Yeah, I, I think if council wants to kind of revisit the priorities and the basing of the priorities, um, we can certainly do that. It would, um, I guess it affects our, our applications for funding because we have to say what we're doing and that, that type of thing. But, um, basically the message with this is that there'd be two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars budgeted, but nothing would happen unless we get funding of a hundred and forty-two, five hundred, or you just did a hundred and forty-two, five hundred worth of, worth of improvements. Um, but we can, if, if that's the direction council wants to, like, address it in the budget with a, with a figure, we can bring back the, the plan and look at the priority, priorities for basing if you wish to.
I think we all recognize that something needs to happen in, in Generations Active Park. Um, and so I, I would assume that we're all in favor of something moving forward, and, and as was suggested, we can kind of fine-tune that, take a little bit of a deeper dive. Um, it wouldn't change necessarily that dollar figure or the grant response. Make sense? No?
Okay, but the next item on the budget is the Glen Allen Drive Sidewalk, and this is the one adjacent to the hospital. And so, um, it's in the budget for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, but there's been identified a few dip, a few different options. Um, one is to have fifteen parking stalls at an estimated cost of one hundred and seventy thousand. Option two for nine parking stalls at a hundred thousand, or to replace the existing, uh, six parking stalls at eighty-five thousand. Um, keeping in mind, uh, we are getting a contribution of seventy thousand dollars towards that project, um, to move the parking and, and sidewalks to the other side of the street. So I'm not sure if you wanted to discuss those options, um, while we have engineering staff here?
Yeah, I think, uh, I think council may have some questions on, um, because I think we, we assumed at the time when we were kind of working with the province that, uh, eighty-five thousand was the number we were looking at. And that's when we had the seventy from the province, our obligation was fifteen. So I don't want to speak for everyone, but certainly in my head, the difference was always just fifteen. Recognizing that only gives us, um, six parking spaces. Uh, so I don't know how council feels in terms of starting to increase that dollar amount. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, I guess the question is, why do we suddenly feel that we need nine or fifteen? I think, I think we're losing nine, gaining six. Use the math, maybe?
No, we're losing, yeah, we're, basically, we're, we're losing three once we replace.
Yeah.
The six over.
Yeah, so I guess where did, where, why do we move from what we thought we agreed to, which was six, back up to nine, back up to fifteen? Well, really for this, it's fifteen, I guess.
So I, Larry, Larry might want to speak to, uh, why I believe staff were just, uh, providing options. Um, I don't believe the six take us right to the park entrance, but perhaps Larry, if you can.
Yeah, that, that's correct. Uh, fifteen would take you to the park entrance, I guess, and beyond, uh, one of the entrances to the, the larger storm drainage. It was something that, uh, I think was, um, in a budget, uh, for consideration. Some changes or some options were, we, we were asked to look at a couple of options because of the, uh, the hospital project. So we just wanted to make sure council was aware of, of, I guess, all the options that we had looked at. Um, and I believe in the open space plan, there may have been mention about, uh, you know, some, uh, make, perhaps making some parking available for the, uh, for the park. Um, so it's, it's entirely up to council what they would like to do, uh, in that area. We just wanted to make sure that all three options council was aware of.
Okay, uh, Councilor Thorburn, and then Councilor McDonald?
Yeah, I agree with the deputy mayor. I thought we've already made that decision to, to go with the sixty, eighty-five thousand, the seventy, and the fifteen, uh, when we hit our discussion about that, so that's where I'm at.
Thank you, uh, Councilor McDonald?
So Larry, you said if, if we have the six spaces, they won't be at the park entrance. I, I'm assuming you mean they'll be kind of down the street. Is there a reason they can't be at the park entrance? My concern being is that any parking there is probably going to be used for hospital, but if it's right in front of the park entrance, maybe it will, you know, maybe it will be more likely to be used for, for the park?
When the cost estimate was done, um, staff looked at the option of, uh, I guess relocating the lost, uh, parking, uh, for the hospital, I guess, as close to the hospital as possible. So it's, it's as close to the intersection as possible, which is, I guess, further away from the park. That's, that's how the estimate was prepared.
So. Um, yeah, sorry, continue there.
No, I was just going to say if council was, uh, you know, wanted to locate that further south toward the park, it would increase that budget, uh, you know, we'd have to extend the, uh, the sidewalk. So it would, it would increase the, uh, the eighty-five thousand.
Gotcha, that makes sense.
So assuming this is going to be a concrete sidewalk, um, going from the corner and then stopping, just kind of mid whatever block, which, which is fine for the six spaces, is there a huge difference in cost if, like, three years from now, um, we do want to add five more spaces?
We are, uh, intending to, uh, realign the curb, uh, so that, uh, you know, parking could be somewhat off, off the street or off the travel lane. And, and that could be, you know, extended, uh, further on to create more parking down the road, you know, in, in another year, if, if so, if council chooses to do that. It wouldn't add a lot of extra cost. You'd lose some of the curb return, you know, from the off-street parking to realign it back with the travel lane, but it wouldn't be, you know, significant cost.
Um, because I, I'm with a couple of the other comments that were made. In my head, I was prepared for the eighty-five with the seventy coming in. Um, so it's probably easier for staff if we, as council, go through this, this one and just kind of land on a figure so that they can make those adjustments. Uh, I think I've heard Councilor Thorburn and Deputy Mayor Tanner and myself, um, looking at that, the original six spaces that, that we thought we were going to be replacing, I don't know. Uh, Councilor Colwell, you want to chime in?
Yeah, no, I, I, I would agree. Um, I'm fine with the eighty-five.
Thank you, Councilor Caldwell?
Yeah, I too am fine with six.
Thank you, and Councilor Fager?
Uh, yes, um, as originally discussed, um, I was fine with the six. Um, I do have a question, um, with regards to the sidewalks. So, um, my understanding is, um, Councilor McDonald was saying that the sidewalk's not going to go right to the park entrance, Larry?
Uh, that's correct. We didn't allow that in the estimate to go to the, to the entrance.
Okay, but it will be, I guess, I'm thinking about accessibility needs for the park, but, um, so, uh, will there be any, um, concerns there that, um, somebody parking will be able to access the park for the curb cuts and so on?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I don't believe there's currently any curb cuts there. Um, unless, I, I could be mistaken. Uh, when they upgraded the, the trail, they may have put a curb cut in. Uh, I think there's a bit of a grassed area, but, uh, you know, those users that were parking on the opposite side of the road likely were, uh, you know, crossing the road, uh, not in a crosswalk. So I'm not sure safety-wise, you know, whether it would be, uh, decreased with parking on the other side.
Okay.
Uh, Councilor McDonald?
If we, no, you said with the, um, sorry, I forget the numbers now. The fifteen stalls would go to and beyond the park entrance. Where would the nine land?
Uh, that I would have to get back to council. I'm not sure exactly where that would be in relation to the park entrance.
Okay, because I, I think Cheryl's got a great point that if we're going to end up going back and looking at this for accessibility purposes later, why are we not doing that now while we're at it? If the nine could take us to the park entrance and make sure that it, you know, there was a sidewalk with parking and the park was accessible, then, you know, am I thinking that we should do that now? Um, I'm, I'm not really keen to go to the fifteen, like, we, we could go back and, and make those adjustments later if need be. Um, but I'd be interested in knowing where the nine would land and if it would, uh, enhance the accessibility.
We, we could confirm that, and if council wishes, we could also, uh, provide an estimate to extend the sidewalk. I'll say from the six stalls to the park entrance, if that's of an interest of council as well.
That would be great.
Okay.
Yeah, that would, that would be helpful, Larry. And then I don't think there's a curb cut there, like, right at the park entrance. Um, but even that, just doing the curb cut would be interesting to know how much that costs. Because, because to your point, right now, they're parking. Because, because to your point, right now, they're parking, they're parking across the street and walking where there's no crosswalk and still going into the park that's not properly accessible, if you will. So getting them on that same side of the street of the park is already safer. But if we could make it a little bit more accessible with a curb cut, that's cheaper than going all the way to 170,000, that would be, that'd be good information to have.
Okay.
So right, right now, we're looking at the, at just the 85. But with the caveat that some additional information, as Council McDonald just asked for, that would be very helpful before starting to make final decisions. Any other questions on that? It came back to you.
Okay. Next up is the guardrail replacement program. So that's an annual repair replacement for sections that are deteriorated or don't meet safety standards, and the budget for that is $10,000. The next project is the High Street Upgrade in its Phase Three of Three. Victoria to Empire Road Sanitary Storm Sidewalk Traffic Lights. So there's been some land purchases in '21, '22. And I think they need to be carried over to '22, '23. So you might see that one on your carry forward list, just for the land acquisitions. And that budget for that is $940,000. In last year's capital budget, it was identified as being 890,000. So there has been an increase in that total since last year. The next one on the list is I and I upgrades. And the budget for that is $100,000. And you'll notice that it's identified as being funded from the operating reserve. And the reason for that is when, when council approved the wastewater betterment charge for offsetting and, and those type of projects. Anything that's not spent in that year would be put in reserves. So we know we've got at least $100,000 in revenue in '21, '22 that's going to end up in the wastewater betterment reserve. And so this is budgeting to spend those funds in '22, '23 on, on projects. So that's why you'll see it's identified as operating reserve, but it's specifically the wastewater betterment reserve that it would be coming in from. The next line is the Jubilee Road Desbrizé Drive Crosswalk. And that's installation of, of changes that were recommended in the traffic study. And the budget for that is $25,000.
Larry, are we looking at the newer ones that they're, that they're using in Halifax? I see those especially if you go past El Housy. They're lower on the pole, they seem to be, I think they're solar powered. I know they're not super cheap, but they are cheaper than 25,000. Aren't they in the $10,000 range? I'm just wondering if you looked at those. They're certainly brighter, too.
Are you referring to the, the rapid flash beacon system?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're actually, we're going to be installing one of those at the intersection of Jubilee and Exhibition. We're planning to, that would be our first installation, but they, they are options for us to consider. But it, it depends on, if we go solar, it depends on whether or not solar will actually work for the specific location. Otherwise, if we have to look at powered systems, then that may add to the cost as well. I think to buy a solar power system there in the vicinity of 12,000 to 15,000, that's just to buy the equipment.
And do those rapid flash ones have a power to option?
That I would have to confirm. We were just looking at the solar option for, for that particular location.
I just look at not just the price, but mostly in Halifax, we all hear the stories of people getting, still hitting crosswalks. And I know that when I spoke to Counselor Mason, who has a lot of those rapid flash ones in his district, they're seeing a drastic reduction in the people that are being hit in crosswalks with those. Just good for that.
Okay, the next item on the capital budget is the King Street Culvert Replacement near Civic Number 1021. This was originally in the '21, '22 capital budget, but came in significantly over budget. And so it's being reintroduced in this budget with a higher budget figure of $600,000. The next one is the La Haye Street retaining wall. And that's to rotate, replace deteriorating blocks on La Haye Street between the theater and the town line with concrete blocks. And the budget for that is $100,000. There are some funds in the, sorry, in the reserve that could be used that are in the retaining wall reserve fund. The next item is pavement renewal. And so this would just be determined by engineering, once we get in the fiscal year, what streets that would actually be. But the budget amount is set at $400,000, just as part of the annual program. The next item on the list is Pearl Street Paving. So you'll recall this was discussed last year during the capital budget and it was identified to be moved out into the '22, '23 fiscal year. So it's being reintroduced here as well with a budget of $225,000.
Uh, Tammy?
Just on, just on the Pearl Street, and just so council's aware. Council had directed that it come forward in this capital budget, but Larry, correct me if I'm wrong, but construction is still going on. And we anticipate that it will continue for the 2022 construction season. And so there is perhaps a risk that what we, the work that we, we do, there could be damage to, to that caused by construction. Is that correct, Larry?
Uh, yes, it's, if they would use both entrances to Pearl Street, there would be that risk, yes.
Yeah. So just, I'm just bringing that to council's attention. You had asked that it come forward, it's just, it may be premature, given the construction that's occurring there.
Well, to me, again, I'm just speaking for myself. If the conditions that were in place last year that made us push out to this year are still in, in, still there, the construction, then I, I wouldn't want to undo good work of paving. So I would anticipate that it would be pushed out to when they were done. Council McDonald.
Has the condition of the road been assessed since construction began? Because if we're concerned that it would damage new roads, my concern is that, that old road may have seen a lot of damage. And, you know, just kind of wondering if anyone's checked it out to make sure that it's safe and, and that we're not going to have any problems and the residents there aren't going to have any problems on that road?
We have received a number of concerns with regards to that. And we worked with the developer to, I guess, you know, make improvements and keep that safe. We avoided doing pavement management in that area last year, knowing that that construction was going on. And we'll likely, you know, continue to postpone that work until that, that development is finished as well. But we will have to maintain the road to ensure that it's safe.
Can I follow up to that?
Yep, of course.
I assume the developer has been cooperative in making sure that those, those upgrades or repairs have been done and in a timely manner?
We, we've had to make a few requests to, to have them address that issue.
Okay.
Any questions, Council Fager?
Yeah, I'm in favor of, you know, deferring the paving project just to, while there's ongoing construction to make sure, as your comments noted, Mayor, to make sure that we don't undo any of the the paving work, the new paving work. So it just makes sense to defer until the project is complete.
Thank you. Any other comments on that? Okay, Kim?
Okay. Next on the list is the Pinecrest Park Bridge Replacement. The budget for that is $15,000. The next line is the Pinecrest Subdivision Storm Sewer. And that is providing dedicated storm sewer in areas that don't have it. And it was part of the 2018 sanitary storm water master plan. And the budget for that for '22, '23 is $100,000. And it'd be partially funded with gas tax. The next item on the budget is the police vehicle. And so they're budgeting for two vehicles. So the budget is increased over what was there for the prior year for two vehicles in order that they have one gas and introduce one electric vehicle to their fleet.
Council Thorburn.
Yes, my question is the one back on the subdivision there. We've been playing with that now for a few years. And Larry, was the original place that 1.2 million, because that's what's still in there? Should that be down as we're spending some of that to show us what the final place would be?
We didn't actually do a, a complete estimate of the whole subdivision. This is just an annual program that council was investing 100,000 per year. And that should be probably a total for 10 years and maybe, I guess, the future perhaps as well. But it's, it's just an annual program that we, we've been investing 100,000 per year into. And our previous studies also recommended that we continue to invest in that subdivision to separate the storm and sanitary to improve our capacity of our sanitary and reduce overflows.
Yeah, I agree, but I think the, the final price should be there, whatever that number would be. But leaving that, that each year and taking away and still leaving it there doesn't tell us what the end cost should be or will be.
So that is an accumulation of, of all the years that are in the budget itself. So there's kind of a master file in behind what you're seeing in the, in this report. And so it is totaling all the years. It does however include the last year or two in that total, even though they'll eventually, they'll come off. But we left them there until we have the carry forwards determined. So, but that is totaling up the total cost. If we take those old years out, it actually would only give you the next 10 years. It's not going to show you what was in the history on that, because it only totals what's in the 10-year capital plan.
Great, thanks.
Uh, Council McDonald.
On the police vehicles, I, I looked back and I don't have any notes on it, but I recall last year, I, I feel like we didn't purchase a police vehicle either because it came in over budget or we couldn't source them. Does anyone recall what the issue was?
I believe the lack of, lack of source was the, the issue last year, couldn't find one.
Do we have any indication that that problem is in the same state or has it gotten better? I just don't want to keep trying to get one, we don't get it, and then we're not managing a problem in the meantime?
Yeah, my understanding is that, that the chief was able to source a police car.
Right.
And then the EVs have less of a challenge in the supply chain right now.
Right, okay. I just didn't want there to be a big problem there, like a big lag. And then we need four next year and we can't get four. And, great, thank you.
There will be a request coming forward to council at the, the next council meeting requesting pre-budget approval. Because there's a time issue too, right? Getting it within the fiscal year, so he needs a little bit of lead time to do that.
It might be interesting for the, the public, if they're watching, to understand that one of the benefits to, an EV costs more upfront. But a couple of studies that were done show that they actually save about $5,000 a year in their operating costs. So they're, over the life of the vehicle, they become cheaper. And they last about two years longer than a gas-powered car, because there's less wear and tear on, on moving parts and things like that. So this will be very interesting as we, we watch to see if we can replicate some of that, those stats from other jurisdictions.
All right, so the next item on the capital budget is the Prince, Prince Street Culvert. And that's to replace a failed one there now, and the budget for that is $21,000. The next item is the Public Works Garage Overhead Door Replacement. So that's budgeted for $10,000. This is a plan that has overall replacement of 13 doors and at one or two doors per year. So you'll see that item continue. It was originally budgeted to have two in that year, and we did reduce it down to one for '22, '23. The next item is the Ride-On Roller for Public Works. And that's to replace the smaller walk behind one with a, with a ride-on roller. And the budget for that is $80,000. The next item is a new budget item this year, which is the road to the La Haye River for water access or fire. And the budget for that is $20,000.
And Deputy Mayor Tanner, you have a question?
Yeah, two questions now. The ride-on roller, is that, is that for paving?
Yes, I believe so, but Larry might have more information.
Yeah, that would be the primary use, yes.
Okay, and do we use that very much, given that we tend to contract a lot of that stuff out?
We've been doing more of the asphalt patching with our own staff because of availability of, of contractors for doing the smaller projects. This would give us more opportunity to do some of the bigger projects. We were really challenged last year with getting, getting some of our works done externally.
Understood. And the La Haye River Water Access, where would that be?
That's just south of the 103 overpass on King Street, North King Street. There was a somewhat of an access there years ago that's overgrown.
Okay, and is there, so I figured that was sort of, not necessarily the area, but the, the concept. So is there a way to morph that into access for kayakers, like the park-like?
Good question.
It, it, it would provide access. I, I know years ago, the local fishermen, the salmon fishermen, used to, used to access that area for, for fishing. I, from what I recall, it, it would serve, you know, reasonable access for, for that type of activity. It's been a number of years that I've been down there, but I think, you know, access seemed pretty reasonable to the river.
So that would be an interesting thing to look at, because to me, if you're, if you're creating more park-like recreation access, even though it's primarily used for fire, would there potentially be the opportunity for some provincial grants if we're creating more green space? Council Thorburn.
I know the fire chief is on here, Michael, but the way it is now with the boat, you can't get up past the new bridge. If it was emergency, because the boat is too big, depending on the tide level. So if you had that access up there and could use it, it would certainly be having instant going up and you could get in the, the Haye River from there. So it's quite important.
Okay, the next budget item is also related to fire, and that's equipment for them, which in talking with the fire chief is expiring in May of 2023 and needs to be replaced and is not optional. And the budget for that is $250,000.
There's no grants for things like that from the, from the province?
I think that Allison has looked into that. And I know we didn't qualify this year, I'm not too sure about next year, but she will, if there is, she'll source it. It's only every so many years that they'll provide a grant. Okay, for those following on their own, I've moved the third page, which starts with Sidewalk Improvement Program. Again, this is an annual replacement program. The budget is $90,000 for this year. The next item is survey equipment, and this is a reintroduction. It was included in the '21, '22 capital budget, was tendered but came in over budget. So it's being reintroduced with a new budget of $70,000. The next item is the Town Hall Camera System Upgrade. And it's to replace a failed system, and the budget is $10,000. The next item on the list is the Town Hall Heat Pump. And it's part of the annual or yearly HVAC Improvement Program that would see Level Two and Three being completed, and the budget for that is $70,000. Next up is the Town Master Plan Study, Phase Four, with a budget of $50,000. Next up is the town master plan study, phase four, with a budget of $50,000. And this is year four of four. Next up are a few vehicles, the first one being a half-ton uh replacement of vehicle number 412. Um and with a budget of $59,000 for parks. There is a half-ton replacing number 50 for $59,000. A third, which is a half-ton truck for facility staff for $30,000. Um subsequent to submitting this, um it has been identified by engineering, they could potentially use retiring vehicle number 412, which I just noted. Um for facility staff, it might not be a good long-term plan, but would give them um an opportunity to have a a vehicle without purchasing something um and you that would be the better choice of the two that are coming out of service. Um instead of selling for surplus that could potentially be used instead of purchasing that vehicle uh for facility staff.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor Tanner.
Just a quick question. Have we done a um initial check-ins with dealerships or anything like that, just with regard to the availability of of the hybrid vehicles? I think it might be quite a battle to get some of those. I'm just curious what the backup plan might be.
You'd want pre-approval, I think, for sure.
Yeah, staff has checked with uh one uh local supplier and uh the electric option is still not available. Uh as far as hybrid, uh I I I'm not sure. I think there, you know, there might be challenges with the supply of of a variety of vehicles, but uh I I guess it's something that we could um, you know, tender for and see what we get for responses.
I I'd just like to add too that if if there is an option, as as Kimmy said, for one of the trucks to kind of be a hand-me-down for now, recognizing that A, it's a very challenging time to get vehicles and B, I think um there's some cost challenges because it's supply and demand. So I think um I think where we can avoid buying a vehicle, it's probably wiser to use the hand-me-down at least at least buying us a year uh until we're going through the pandemic and things start to settle down. So I I'd be in favor of kind of moving one of those out and using the hand-me-down.
I believe staff were recommending um that the the used half-time truck that they were proposing to buy for 30,000 would be removed. And we would use a truck 412 for that.
Right, perfect. I just just to reflect it in the in the next update of the budget.
Okay, and there was um a fourth there, a half-ton hybrid truck as well for engineering uh with a budget of $59,000 as well. So that was uh that will be four moving down to three. Um the remaining items are all wastewater uh treatment plant items. And that is a circulation pump replacement uh for $30,000. A clarifier refurbished for $300,000. A conditional assessment for 120,000. Pump station 11, um which was also included in last year's budget. This is um a continuation of a of a larger project. Um so the amount for the 2223 fiscal year would be just over 4.2 million dollars. We do have confirmed funding for that um in the amount of 2.1 million dollars. The next one is the RBC shock replacement program and the budget for that is $250,000. Replacing the bar screen, the project total is $300,000. The RBC drive is $40,000. UV upgrade redundancy, $120,000. And the wastewater pump replacement program at $25,000. So that has um a capital budget for 2223 total of just over 14.2 million dollars.
Thanks, Kim. Uh Deputy Mayor Tanner.
I probably don't want to know the answer to this question, but at what point do we look at a replacement of the wastewater treatment plant?
It's probably in your $120,000 conditional assessment.
Yeah, uh yeah, I I think that would be of value uh to know the result of that assessment. They would look at the remaining life cycle of all the various pieces of equipment, uh determine costs uh for replacement. And that would give you uh information, I guess, to see if you, you know, do you upgrade or do you replace?
Did you do that assessment before you order all those other parts?
Yeah, that was sequencing.
Well, we we know those have to be done. Uh we suspect the conditional assessment is going to identify uh you know, uh many other components that will need to be done. Uh they would prioritize uh those components as well uh to help give us, I guess, a a capital plan going forward. Uh but we we know those things have to be done.
Now, I know it's in next year's budget, but I also know we're going to get calls on. I do see in the 2324 budget, and we're talking about that today. The beginning of some work on Empire Street starts. So I know that I'm just trying to get ahead of, I know people are going to have questions with pavement renewal and stormwater separation. When does Empire Street get done? Because it's a pretty rough shape, but that is sitting on the budget for next year, so. Just in case, let's have questions. Are there any questions on what we've had so far? There's been a few changes suggested. Uh Councilor Colwell.
Since you brought up Empire Street, I would like to uh clarify that's is that not a multi-year project and next year is the first year and this is many years, is it not?
That's correct, yeah. So it starts with one stretch. You're right. Yeah, next year is the first of a few. Any other questions on the 2223? Councilor Thorburn?
Yes, while we're talking about Empire, that that was completed a few years ago before we started Dominion Street up as far as York. So we're just looking to go from uh York Street to High Street. I think that's correct, isn't it, Larry?
Yes, that's correct. And and previous budgets a few years ago had had the remaining section broken into four. And I believe now it's only broken into two. We were looking at doing larger uh sections. So there's two remaining phases.
Didn't mean to open a can of worms, Councilor Colwell.
You did open a can of worms. The 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 two phases are not over two consecutive years, though, correct? And i- is it possible to have them over two consecutive years?
So the 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 sheets, I think the last page uh shows that the Empire Phase Four, which is Hillcrest to High, is planned in 2728. So you have uh not, you have 2324 and 2728. So Larry, could they be, could they be uh sequenced so that they occur one year right after the other? Understanding we may have to shift some of our capital works around to fit that in.
Or even if you did 2324 and then and then 2526, skipping that 2425 year. Because that's a rough shape up there. I don't know if you can wait that long, can you?
It it is uh it it's not uncommon, I guess, for us to shift projects around depending on priorities. And and that would get looked at, I guess, each year. And and also, you know, based on availability of funding as well. So there is flexibility in changing projects, knowing that some others may get changed as well to to, I guess, try and keep the bottom line similar as what's presented in the budget.
Thank you. I I I apologize for bringing up something that's not in this year's budget. I just know each of us are going to get calls and and maybe it's worth having another discussion on this about um Empire and any other of those streets that are really um kind of stand out as as needing um needing a lot of work. So it's my my fault, so I apologize for bringing it up. I don't want to lose sight of it. Any other questions on the 2223? Budgets? Councilor Colwell.
Uh the main item I have some concern about is uh one that was brought up earlier, the uh Police Station Energy Project. So I I do, I think the the project's a good idea, but I do have some problems with paying the full amount um for uh a building that we don't own. Um I've just got some issues with that. If it was a cost-sharing agreement with the owner of the building, I'd be more amenable to that.
Yeah, so so Tammy or or Kim, is it possible to have to try to have that conversation with um with the owner of the building uh before we take another kind of look at this? Uh so we either know that there is at least an opportunity or that there's not an opportunity and then we can make a decision based on that?
Yep, um I'm just looking at the uh lease too, so. Um yeah, the lease ends on April 30th, 2032.
Also, it is 10 years.
Yeah, yeah, it was a 25-year term. We started it May 1st, 2007. But we can certainly, so you do have a bit of if if you got 10 years remaining in there, so I don't know if that helps you feel a little bit more comfortable with that, but we can, we can have that conversation with the landlord to see if they're willing to contribute to it. I do believe the lease says it's it's a expense that we're responsible for, but and uh but we can certainly see if they're prepared to provide some funding towards it.
Great, thank you. I think it's a question we'd like to we're all probably anxious to have an answer to. Uh Councilor Conklin, you were next.
Yeah, hi. Um just to echo uh Counselor Colwell's concern on the uh proposed project with the police station. I mean, um it'd be a different story for me anyway if uh if it was a building that the town owned, not leased, so um I would definitely want to see the uh landlord be able to uh help with the cost sharing.
I'm wondering if we if we should have Miles provide something on what the expected life is of that equipment? If it exceeds 10 years, if it has value beyond that point as well?
Well, that would certainly help us make that that case to the landlord to say, you know, in 10 years, you're going to inherit a building that's got another 10 years worth of equipment life out of it. And so there should be some kind of recognition of that. So any of any information like that, I think that's what council's looking for. And as well, a conversation with with the building owner. Uh Councilor Thorburn?
Yeah, I do remember when we went over that item, I think $26,000, if I remember correctly, is uh funding for that grant. So we're really talking the 54 and we don't know what project that is. I don't think I'd have any problem doing the 26,000 that had a grant to do it. It's really the 54 that we're kind of looking at. Does that make sense?
It it's not separate. It's a, the funding is a percentage of the total project in rebates um through Efficiency Nova Scotia. Um so it we we can't just do the grant-funded portion. It's it's not funded. It's funded on a percentage basis.
So with the 26, we have to do the 54.
Yeah, yeah, that's just, that's just to help offset some of of our costs of the $80,000, the grant. And we might need to find out if we would be excluded from that funding because it is through a small business program that we are receiving that that funding through Efficiency Nova Scotia. So we wouldn't want to jeopardize $26,000 of funding to gain $10,000 for another slot. And and Miles does know, like, and we can certainly have the conversation with the landlord, but regardless, it's probably something council may want to give serious consideration to because your payback is three years. And then after that, every year, your annual savings is $16,480. So that's accumulated, right? So you gotta think about that every every year after that. That's what you're saving in energy costs, whether you own the building or not.
Oh yeah, for sure. Like for for me, it's, I I recognize the payback. I see the value in doing the work. It's just I think the value is shared between us and the building owner. So I think there should be there should be something towards that, I think. I don't think anyone's arguing that there's there's energy savings and a and a short payback, but. Yeah. So we'll we'll have some information come back to us before we have to make a decision. Any other questions on what we've gone through? Kim, have you got more to? Thorburn?
Yep. Yes, so I just wanted to share with you as well, just I know the the final pages of the document are small, hard to read, and there's a lot of uh capital projects summarized in that 10-year plan. So um this just gives you a bit of a breakdown on the total. So you can see the 2223 and you can see the wastewater component of that being 5.5 million dollars. And then we just wanted to be able to break down the future years for you without going through uh line by line. So you can see that, you know, of the very large amount of dollars we're going to spend on capital projects, that the majority of that $37 million of that is on wastewater projects. Um and so that's pretty pretty significant. Um so we just wanted you to see a bit more of that breakdown. So I'm not sure if there was any specific questions on that. You'll notice there's a line called admin. Um that's just exit 12A stuff that was categorized under um Tammy's department as opposed to engineering.
Any questions on that? Councilor Colwell.
Would now be appropriate time to ask about a couple specific projects in the 10-year plan?
Sure, yeah.
Um so I'm wondering, especially for the public, if you could explain uh downtown phase two um is scheduled for next budget year. Just wondering about uh what's involved with that and why begin next year?
Larry, is that something? Or Jessica? Okay. Larry or Jessica?
I'll start and Larry can jump in. Um the uh the phase two of the downtown plan uh was at a different part in the budget and it was it was bumped around uh over the past couple of years. The first year of it is 200,000 for design work. And then the implementation, which is at this point estimated at 1.2, is in the following uh fiscal year from that. Um and it was uh moved around to align with um the wastewater and stormwater separation element to it. Uh Larry, I don't know if there's more to add there? Or Audrey?
No, I don't have any more to add.
The Downtown Plan Advisory Committee uh met today and they did raise an issue around the timing of the phase two of the downtown and if those developments that are going through a public participation meeting tonight for 777 King and 388 King, but in particular 777 King falls into this particular project area. So the question was asked if our roadwork would align with construction times, which is impossible to to truly guess depending on on the plans of the developer, but um that was a question raised.
Right now, the capital budget has that proposed for uh design in 2324 and construction in 2425. So it it it's hard to say. It depends on the development, the developments being proposed and when when they actually start. But it would definitely because it goes from north, the North Parkway to Victoria Road.
Does that give you some clarity? Councilor Colwell, do you have do you have a follow-up?
Uh it does, yes, it does. Uh I mean, if it's uh it sounds like it's largely based on the underground infrastructure, the the timing of it. So that was my main uh question that I had. And I had another question about, uh we had a rather extensive report on um intersections and traffic lights. Um I saw some in the 10-year plan. I I was expecting more. Mind you, it's a it's a lot of readings. I may have missed some. I'm just wondering um what it is we have planned and and why.
That's a Larry question, I think.
Yeah, I'm not sure, Matt, if if you happen to have a specific list. Uh I know a number of the projects were included in the capital as well as in the operations, so. So, so some of the items that were recommended would be included in operations as well. That council would not necessarily see in the capital. I'm not sure, Matt, do you have any further information? I was actually trying to find the email that I filed where Jess and I went over and requested Sandy to put it in the budget. So I know those items are in there. It was incorporated, but I don't have it at my fingertips of which years. So I'd have to do a little bit more digging and I can provide that after the fact if need be.
So right now they're, I'm sorry, I could say right now they're incorporated into like specific projects like High Street Upgrade. The lights will be looked at at Dufferin and High. And so there's, that's kind of how you have a group now, right? Kind of by project as opposed to signaling it out in the capital plan as intersection work specifically.
Yes, some of those have already been included. I think that was been covered already in projects. And I know some of the, I'm going to use the term low hanging fruit, that we're going to be, there's, we were hoping to do some this year, but they were going to be done through the operations as well.
Oh, you muted.
That's why I'm not seeing some of the individual projects. They're sort of lumped in with larger projects in some cases, I guess.
But we can, one of the things we did commit to council was bringing back an implementation plan for you that showed you when we anticipated that we would do that. So it's been incorporated into the capital budget. But perhaps, Matt, what we can do is, you said Sandy, you kind of have a list of what and when based on project. We can, we can give that to council. So you, you have some comfort. It's there and you understand what project it's connected with.
That'd be great.
Okay.
That would be great, yeah.
Deputy Mayor?
I think I've got too many sheets open here, but anyway, I'm going to take a stab at it. So I think last year we had $515,000 in pavement renewal and this year we're down to $400,000. And I don't think things are, every year we talk about this, I think things are getting worse. Like we're not even keeping up status quo from what I understand. And just wondering where we might find some extra money there maybe? I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that, but.
I think the issue was, and Larry obviously jumped in, was the issue not that we have a capacity issue, right? So we could put $10 million in pavement renewal, but we can only do X number of dollars of pavement renewal. So I guess, just to piggyback on the deputy mayor's question, if we add more, Larry, can we do more?
Last year, there was $515,000 in capital. This year it was 400 because that, that was typically what we had introduced on a yearly basis for, for council to consider. And council did increase that last year to $515,000 in capital. And we also have the $200,000 in, in operations. So we did utilize that budget last year and I foresee we could do that again this coming year if council wishes to increase that capital budget.
And just a follow-up, is it safe to say that costs of asphalt is increasing?
I know Sandy's here. Sandy, do you recall if there was a specific increase for last year as compared to the year before? I don't, I don't know that there was any significant increase.
Okay.
No, there wasn't really any significant increase in the dollar value for asphalt.
So I guess regardless, my personal opinion is I'd like to see that bumped up, but.
Yeah, I'd like to see it increased too, but I guess I need, I need to make sure that whatever we increase it to is something that we can, we can do. So going back to my earlier point in that, that's something that Larry will probably have to come back to us with. If we said X is the number we want to see done, we want to make sure that you can do X. Because that's not, it's not fair to you to say, you know, like I said, do a million dollars of the paving and then have you come back and say, well, we can only get through half a million dollars because we don't have, you know, good stash shortages or asphalt shortages, whatever. So I guess we need to kind of know what's the upper limit and then we work down from there maybe. You don't have to answer with that number today.
Okay.
But that, I think, does that sound fair, Andrew? Like, like to your point, you want more, but what, how much more can we do? Yeah, so if maybe we could get that at some point, that would be great. Councilor Thorburn, you were next.
Yeah, I believe I can stand to be corrected, but by doing High Street, we're going to be doing quite a bit of paving up there that really needs it from Empire to Victoria Road. And I understand we're going to be doing a fair amount of work up on St. Philp Street, which will fix up probably another section of street that's not so, so bad. So last year, I don't think we've done any major projects other than the paving. But we're doing two or three this year that will allow us to do more paving and get more stuff done. But I still am in favor of upping that budget, not $100,000 or $200,000 if we can do it when we get to the final stage.
Thank you, Councilor Thorburn. Councilor Fehr is next.
Yes, I just want to mention, I know last year we increased the budget for sidewalks, which I'm just wondering if there's an appetite to do the same again this year. Because I know there are sidewalks in town that are in need of repair. And if we're able to stretch a dollar and increase the sidewalk budget, that would be most beneficial. So just, I see the budget is 90,000. Like, do you recall, Larry, what it was last year that we increased it to?
Council added another $100,000, so it was $190,000 last year. And we've spent in the vicinity of $150,000 this year. We were hoping to do a bit more over the winter if it was an open winter, but we haven't cut it.
Councilor Caldwell's next.
I was going to raise the issue of sidewalks, also 90,000 to 400,000. I think, I think that's slightly out of whack. I think we should be spending a little more on the sidewalks and paving more streets. I'd have to see what, what we propose to cut to get more money for sidewalks. I'm not, I think it's okay the way it is now, especially because there's some, there's some, we're paving more streets from the 400,000 because there are major projects that will also involve paving streets. So anyway, I'd like to see.
Yeah, sometimes we have to cut to make those, to increase the paving. And then sometimes we transfer less from into reserves. But yeah, your point is well taken. Tammy?
Yeah, I was just going to mention that what you did, you did kind of push out Pearl Street until the following fiscal year. So we were going to fund that from reserve and that was 225,000. And we had a, I think it was a truck, that was 30,000 coming from the operating budget as well. So there's 255,000 that you cut tonight. I think that was pretty much the cut.
Perhaps the parking on Glen Allen, but we weren't settled on that one.
Yeah, that's right. And that was grants and, and reserve as well. So there, there is a little bit of room there if you want to, you know, if you're looking for something that would have an impact. That would mean that you'd be pulling less from reserve. Or if the truck, we wouldn't be funding that from operating. So they, they have good, good impacts.
So there is some, there is some wiggle room with that information to reallocate some for paving, some for sidewalks. And so I guess I'll go back to my earlier point to Larry, which is how much more can we do? Because if we took the 200,000 and put it all on sidewalks, for example, but you said you could only do another 40,000 sidewalks and that's a waste of, that's a waste. So are you able to get back to us with what you think is that number? And we can see where we can fit that in if we can?
Yes, we can give council, certainly give that information to council.
Does that make sense, everybody? To get that, then we can work within that bucket. Other questions? Councilor Caldwell?
I'd just like to clarify about, circle back. Empire Street, are we, are we going to consider shifting things around there that the project happens over two years? Is that something we'll look at?
Yeah, I think that, yeah, sorry Tammy.
Oh, I was going to say that the years going out are really, they're not cast in stone. So we can move it around, but it could change again. So if you want to, if you want to see that change reflected now, we can. But it is, it is just a plan for future years and we're not, we're not casting that in stone as much as we would be, say, approving the 2223 capital budget. So there's certainly lots of opportunity when council debates budgets in the future to move it then as well. So it's really what you want to see today, but it could change in future years, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, certainly a discussion we will have long before we get to next year.
Yeah.
Councilor Fehr?
Yeah, I just wanted to, as Counselor Caldwell said, just to see if it is an option that we can do it back to back for the two phases. I think it would be best for those residents that, you know, the, the project is spanned over two years versus a break and then a few years later. So I just, if, if the staff could come back with a proposed budget with back to back years, I think that would be good to look at.
Other questions? Kim, did you have more to go through on this?
Just a couple of things I wanted to note about the 2223 budget that are different than prior years with regards to the total. So the operating, so the amount of capital projects being funded by operating reserve was 864,000, which is quite significant. We normally wouldn't draw such an amount from operating reserve. So I'm just going to jog your memories back to the quarter two report. In that quarter two report in operating, I had identified, I think it might have been notified previously to council as well. But the town received an additional amount this year of $531,000 for, it's called our capacity building, used to be known as equalization payment. And so as part of the municipal review, that payment was doubled for us this year. And we had suggested to council that we were going to put that in reserve to be used in the future. And so we have used that 531 or $530,000 by saying, you know, in the current year we're in, we received it in 2122. We're recommending it go in reserve. But we're also suggesting, because it's such a big capital budget, that we're funding some of these capital projects out of that. So that's why $864,000 in total is being funded because we're bringing that additional operating funding we got last year or in the year we're in and bringing that in to help with the cost of the capital budget. Likewise, the 2223, the capital from operating is that $1.7 million, which is quite a bit higher than we would normally fund from operating. But we are anticipating with increased assessed values, we'll have extra tax revenue and that we're recommending part of that, the, part of that increase be used to fund the capital budget as well.
Councilor Thorburn, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I'm getting a little bit concerned with the amount of this budget, but we really still don't know what we got carried over from last year. And I think we have to make sure we have the capacity to do what we're funding. And I'd be interested to find out how much our carryover would be because that would have to be added to what we're planning for this year to give us a number. And then I think engineering would have to tell us if they could do the work.
Yeah, we are bringing the carry forwards, I believe, to the February 14th as we're targeting council meeting. That, those carrytowards will come with their, their own sources of funding from this year. But yes, it's important to make sure that we agree the capital budget is doable, especially for funding from operating and, and all those things. So I believe Larry, when, when it was developed, that's the intent, correct?
Yes.
I think that was all that I wanted to present on the, on the capital budget itself. But I'm happy to answer any, any questions on that and we'll have the changes that were recommended tonight made as well.
Any other questions for Director of Finance or our team that have joined us? No, that was a good discussion. This will, this will of course be updated and additional information that we've requested from staff will come back to council and take another look at it. Anything else for this special capital budget council meeting? We have an in-camera following this. I'm going to suggest we take a five-minute break and then council, you'll click on the new link that's in your email. That was emailed out for that. If there's nothing else, huge thank you to Kim and her team and to all the staff that are on the call. I know preparing these is not easy, especially it's quite early. We still have, we're still using some numbers, some like the halfway point of the year. So I know you're doing the best you can and under challenging circumstances with pandemic. So thank you so much. Greatly appreciated. If there's nothing else, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Councilor Thorburn, seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner, we are adjourned and we'll see you in camera in about five minutes, folks.